Welcome everybody to Town Hall number ninety-three. It's April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. And we've got a nice group today. We're joined by Judith, Soundwaves, Colleen, Curtis, Easy, Gorga, Hayley, Hogan, Nicola, O A P, Footy G, Robert, Stephen, Tontec, Funny, Walter, William and William. Good having you all here. As you can see on the screen, a little outline of the agenda. Uh, we start off with a couple of mentions and um it's gonna be a bit messy on the short mentions versus uh longer topics, but uh we'll manage, I'm sure. Um we'll have a quick note on the facilitators collective. And after that, I do want to touch on the merger, which uh voting has concluded for today. And after that, there's room for open topics. Then a quick note on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Uh basically, it's a place for anybody that uh wants to contribute to sharing the mission efficient of Singularity Net. And we have a wide variety of workgroups on all kind of different topics. And if you're interested in joining in on the fun, do up onto our Discord server. You'll find a getting started channel there, which will get you started. So then, without further ado, uh we start off with a couple of mentions and I'm gonna put Judith right on the spot. Um yeah, you had some uh some some announcements. Is announcements correct or updates?
Yes. So the first announcement is uh the deep funding town hall. So from now on, we're gonna have a deep funding town hall every week, which will be um eighteen UTC in this week's town hall. Um, we're gonna discuss everything about deep funding round four. Deep funding round four is around the corner. It's set to launch on twenty-second of April, which is exciting. So in this um deep funding round four, we're gonna get an update from Jan and Raphael around all the pools that we're gonna have, um the RFPs, the new rules. Um, and we are possibly, I think as far as I understood, we will invite also the fetch and ocean community into the deep funding town hall, which is exciting. I think this is our first attempt to um bring the communities together. Oh, I guess apart from the YouTube AMAs we had. Um, um, yeah, deep funding round four, please join us on Thursday eighteen UTC if you're interested. Um, another announcement is the Supervisory Council Blueprint. As you're all aware by now, the Supervisory Council and the lead writer is writing the decentralization blueprint. And a lot of you have contributed to it already. A lot of you have been part of the workshops, which we are really grateful for. Now, the Supervisory Council has a few weeks left to finish the blueprint and they're still looking for contributions. So they have said, um, they will leave it completely up to you if you still wanna engage and how you wanna engage. So there is a budget from the Supervisory Council for uh people to engage. So now, they said they don't wanna kind of give you the the restrictions on on how to get engaged or they don't wanna necessarily come up with the with the ways you can get engaged. They would like you to come up with that. Um whether you would like another workshop, whether you'd say, um, I reviewed the entire blueprint and I would like to have a one-on-one meeting. Um. So yeah, you can let them know if you're interested. Um, if you wanna engage and review and contribute to the blueprint and there is budget for it, so please request something, request the budget if you want. Um, but should there be the case that no one is interested and you all had enough and you all think I contributed enough or I cannot hear it anymore, then that is also fine. I'm just here to let you know that they would appreciate more contribution if you want to and there is budget to do so. And that is it for now.
Nice. Thank you. Um, yeah, so clearly uh the third line on the sheet is uh incorrect. It's eighteen UTC. Uh, and good to know on the on the blueprint, I I was gonna touch on it like maybe suggesting we could have a shared session as ambassadors um going over the document. Um.
Yeah, I think that would be fantastic. But uh yeah, they definitely want us to come up with the with the proposal on how we wanna engage and how much we wanna charge or get paid, so to say. So I don't know if we wanna discuss that in here or do you wanna do it via chat or if you just wanna?
Well, so far I wasn't quite aware of the uh budget side of things. Um, and honestly, on a personal perspective, I care more about the document than the rewards for contributing to it. But then again, if it's an option, uh might as well, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I think probably another group session with people that are interested would be pretty good.
Yeah, I agree. Um, quickly checking the schedule for me personally, Friday is always has some space. Um.
Right, there's lots of questions in the chat.
Yep.
Will contribution be attributed in the blueprint? Um, not that I'm aware of. I think it just says in general that it's a a shared document where the community contributed. I'm not sure if this if there will be single name mentions. I will I will double check. But I think a lot of people contributed as anonymous as well.
Yeah, true. Yeah, if people choose to interact on a document anonymously, then that kind of forfeits also the the attribution, right? Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Uh, see some questions on what kind of license? I would not have the answer right now on that.
What kind of license were? I don't even see the question. Where is that?
Uh, a bit up in chat, let's say. How to say where it is? Um. Just under the first question of Stephen.
Well, I'm clearly bummed.
You have your hand up, so go for it.
Yeah, rather than keep typing it. It's really just um kind of an open source ethos question, Judith. You know, as we are committed to open source and Singularity Net, I would think that our governance documentation should actually have an open source license of some kind um to say, um, you know, is it how reusable it is or if it has a Creative Commons license? And that goes same to say for attributions. It's pretty standard to have attributions. If there's anonymous contributions, they can be attributed as well. You know, so you can just say, yes, there was anonymous contributions. But it'd be good to just give people the opportunity to be attributed. That's all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, definitely. I will uh I will bring it up in the Supervisory Council meeting. I feel like that's maybe something that could be commented on the blueprint itself as well. Maybe that's even something that could go into the blueprint somewhere.
Oh, it has been commented. Don't don't doubt that.
Okay, okay. I was not aware.
If it's not in the the version as it stands, then that's an oversight.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
It might be. I would have to double check. It's a long document.
Yeah, another page with a list of names wouldn't make it too big of a document, so that that should be fine. Can't speak for Supervisory Council, but uh yeah, makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'll definitely bring it up uh to them. Um, but yeah, on the on the payment sites for a, if we were to schedule a group meeting. Yeah, I'm not sure if anyone has a thought around what we would like to request as a payment. They're definitely very happy to reward.
Stephen, go for it.
Yeah, uh would that take the form of bounties, Judith?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it's an interesting one. Like, it's basically an open-ended, feel free to request your own rewards, kind of.
Yeah, it literally is. They said they do not wanna put any restrictions or they don't want it to come from them. They want it to come from the community.
Okay. Um.
Also, since they repeatedly stated that they do want us to have more decision-making and that we remain or that we that we keep our power, so they said makes total sense for the community just to request a budget. Or request a payment. Shouldn't come from the foundation or from the Supervisory Council. Should come from the community. So here we are with all this power. What are we gonna do with it?
That's interesting. I'm not sure what the best way of going about it is. Uh in a way, I would feel um to also discuss that during that session, but then again, you're already in the session for which you want to discuss the rewards. So I'm not sure how that works.
Why? Well, we don't really have to discuss it with them. They just want the final number. Like, they're not uh they're probably just gonna approve whatever we come up with if it's not outrageous.
Have a ceiling or is it totally open?
Hmm?
Do they have a ceiling on that or is it just completely open?
I uh they do have a budget. It's not completely open. Um, I'd have to double check what it is, but as far as I know, there's quite a bit left of what they can spend. Because they've been given a budget on uh for for hiring um support staff and for all kinds of things they have to do to contribute to the blueprint. And if that's getting the community involved uh involved, then yeah, they do have the budget for it. I don't I don't have the exact number right now, but as far as I know, there's quite a bit left from what they've been given.
I would note that um if they don't spend the budget, it carries over to the next Supervisory Council, right? It's not like it's just gone. Uh but yeah, interesting. Um, see a suggestion to um have a meeting on the on the bounty. Uh wouldn't mind at the same time to then spend an hour with, I don't know, eight or ten or twelve, whatever amount of people just discussing the rewards for contributing to a document. Maybe a bit overkill, but yeah, also wouldn't mind it. I think we should kind of keep it simple and and look at um what we in general, what we do for like workshop kind of sessions, contribution sessions and somewhat stick close to that. Like, it's it's a bit weird if we would now do um, I don't know, put forward like, well, it's gonna be a hundred dollars a person per hour. And then after that, any contributions you keep making for the ambassador program will be like, ah, this is not it. It's just low reward, relatively speaking.
Yeah, if time is constrained, I would agree with your piece. I think probably just place it on existing um tariffs maybe and just to say, okay, we'll reward this and go forward from there.
Yeah, it sounds to me like um I'm I'm not sure if we can put like an open-ended uh request, like, well, because we don't know how many people, right? And how many time? So we can suggest some, but then the final amounts would still be open on that a bit. Uh, Guima, you have your hand up.
Yeah, sorry to jump on the on the subject, but I don't know how many times, a lot of members here present and participate in workshops without reward expectation. Um, and and I haven't read the last version, but only for for comments, uh but Vanessa here should be rewarded like what? Uh, but so but so that not being the discussion, but the contributions we can add value through contributions, sorry, can add value to the document. Um, we can we can uh, I don't know, this is thinking out loud, we can put a a one quarter or two, one month or two months work group, whoever wants to jump and work the same amount of uh contributions by hour we pay on the ambassadors or we distribute. And that way find find a measure, a way to not going back on what members have already contributed, but now try to equalize it and not go for a bulk number on a budget, but work in terms of in the results, spending time on the document. Um, I don't know. Um. If we go back, we probably will have done things differently in terms of community.
Well, if you feel like you contributed a lot, there's nothing stopping you from reaching out to them and saying, hey, I contributed five hours. I would like a reward.
No, no, but that's not the idea. No, no, but that's not the idea of my comment. I'm saying I didn't do it for contribution. I do it for what we're doing. But if looking forward, we need to understand what we went through. So shouldn't probably rewards. We are here to add value in a document. Let's just do it, you know? Somebody wants rewards, well, they should raise their hand. I don't know. I'm I'm saying if you have that in mind, you you have to take one-third of the uh Supervisory Council budget and give it to Vanessa and Peter here, here. And so as we can do that, why why not looking forward, try to think in a different way and keep the same uh approach. Whoever wants to contribute, jump in.
Uh, Vanessa, so great.
That's made that's made me laugh, Guima. Thank you. But what I what I was gonna say is that I feel like the whole process of, oh, if you think you deserve something, put your hand up or, you know, jump in and say, it's kind of a little bit too cutthroat and dog eat dog. I'd much prefer us to decide as a community what we should have and how it should be distributed. And I feel like one good step for that would be, I think we've probably all forgotten which meetings there were and who was at them. So it might be good to maybe just set up a little doc somewhere with the dates of the meetings and if you know you were there, you put your name down. And if you know you commented in the doc, you put your name down and we just get a sense of how many people. I know it's tricky with those who commented anonymously, but I think often people comment anonymously because they don't wanna be associated with their particular comment. They don't mind people knowing that they were one of the commenters. So that's my assumption anyway. So maybe that would be a way to go.
That's fine. Good to me. Stephen?
Yeah, there's a kind of reflexive element to this because um an understanding as opposed to doing chats of um how to reward contributions uh is integral to any concept of decentralization in the first place. So to talk about how to reward contributions to a decentralization blueprint is very self-referential in a way, yeah? So what should be in the blueprint is an understanding of that in the first place, okay? So otherwise, you're not conducting any discussion of decentralization with an eye to how contribution should be recognized. And that's why I also mentioned the open source aspect to it. So it should be an understanding of that because that's in line with Singularity Net's commitment to open source and also an understanding of how we transact rewards and contributions, which relates to tokenization in the long term as well.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we're not gonna be able to pinpoint um strict amounts for specific tasks in the blueprint, I feel. That that feels too uh specific to me, but general outlines on on how we deal with um contributions in general, for sure should be in, yes. Um, I'm kind of think it feels like we could spend a whole bunch more time on on this topic, uh but there are some other topics. Um. And yeah.
Well, maybe for now, should we decide if there's enough people that wanna contribute? So we should have another workshop or meeting or are people saying, well, this is just too? I don't know. I don't feel like it. Like, if there's enough people to fill a meeting, or I guess it could be a very small meeting as well, but i- is there interest to continue to work on this blueprint from the community? I think that's all they wanna know for now. And then in terms of budget, then we can figure it out along the way. So if you wanna contribute, maybe raise your hand or raise your hands so we can quickly count, because if it's no one, then we don't have to have the discussion. So it's one. I see. Oh, there's, yeah, there's some. Yeah, plenty. Nice. I will let them know.
Um, so then the question kind of becomes like, do we want them to facilitate a workshop or are we? We we can also just have a session, right? Um. Or both. Uh there's still some time left. Not that much uh weeks remaining, but still some.
Um, I do believe they would like to be part of the session. But I don't think they would be completely against it if we say, hey, we just wanna do it on our own time. I think anything's possible. Again, they said they would like the community to propose.
I'd go for us just doing it if that's an option.
It definitely is an option.
Sounds like we can have both, right? Those who want to be in a session, uh workshop or or meeting or whatever you call it, can um.
Yeah, there's also not only the possibility of one session. We can say, hey, we wanna do a session every two days and they will be happy to do it.
No, pitch. I meant that we should we should do the session. I meant we should do the session rather than asking them to facilitate it.
Well, on that, we can also do both, right? I mean, I don't think we can stop them from having a workshop. Like, you cannot join it. But if they want to have a workshop, there will be one.
Also, workshop doesn't necessarily mean they need to facilitate. It can also just be all of us online, working on the blueprint together without anyone taking the lead necessarily. Since they have to work on it anyways, like they're just happy to, they would probably be happy to work side along us.
Yep. Um, Guima, is that a hand like I want to say something or a hand? I'm interested in the question a couple of minutes ago.
No, no, I wanna say something on regards of operational aspects of workshop. Uh, so yeah, I would have one workshop between the ones that raised their hands and want to participate in the in the discussion. Uh, it mandatory to have written the document before joining because we are not going to get together like a book club to read a wish to code for the second phase to discuss the topics and bring ideas. With the ideas, notes of what we will do, summarize, you know, money you can do thirty pages from this sixty-page document by yourself, uh probably be very critic. And to do that, it will be good for the just us and then probably have a joint workgroup with a workshop with the Supervisory Council. And have one communication channel, one reading or sharing the document before even meeting. Try to organize. If not, we're not gonna have a blueprint for another six months. We start, we we're gonna have a different blueprint. So uh just now, just raising this this operational aspects of what we try to achieve by going through the document and trying to get it, add value on it, not not change it or delete it.
I I quite like that. Um, having a, yeah, making sure people have read it before joining. And then, of course, I also put this in chat, but that can then also be reflected in the rewards, right? Um, apparently there's budgets for it, so. All right. Uh, Stephen?
Yeah, I just wanna echo what him saying there. There's a kind of uh lack of structure may seem attractive and permissionless may seem attractive, but the the chaos that can come from that can just lead to a kind of tyranny. Um, so also to do with velocity, okay? Varsity can just lead to confusion. Um, I would suggest that there be more focus and you start simple, that's all, and with a clear structure.
No, I do agree. Yeah. I mean, it's gonna be tricky. It's a big document, uh just keeping it simple and that that in itself is not a simple task. Um, cool. All right. I I think um for now we covered it enough. I would suggest to continue the discussion in the uh Dour discussion Discord channel. Um. There's the blueprint uh link. And Vanessa is asking, is there money for someone to do a swinging copy edits? Cause I'm down for that.
I'm kidding. I'm just joking when we were going, it's too long, it's too verbose. Somebody needs to do that copy edit.
Fair. Um, well, there's an editor um on the job, so I would imagine that's part of their task.
Yes, there's a writer and an editor.
Oh, who's the editor?
Uh, it's Elizabeth Kusma. I'm not sure. You've seen her on any meeting? I don't I don't think so. Um, in the recent on the on the new decentralization website, I don't know if any of you had the chance to vis- visit it yet. There was a blog going out about the Supervisory Council progress in March and she was introduced there. But yeah, I'm not sure how many of you have been on that new website. I should actually probably share it. Let me grab it. I'll find this.
It's uh decentralization.singularity.net.io, I believe.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, yeah, looking at the clock, we are halfway in. Um, we're at the mentions. Uh, but it's an important topic, so happy to uh allow time for that, of course. Uh, I do have another quick mention on the moderation workgroup. I hope to have a draft proposal uh by the end of week. Uh, so if there's still people interested in helping out with moderation, either on Discord or Telegram, um I mean, it can be broader even, right? There's there's Reddit, there's, well, a plethora of uh platforms. Uh, do speak up, uh send me a DM. Um, yeah, I'll get you on the loop. All right. Um, um, then, uh sorry for the empty slides, Vanessa, but I did want to uh put it somewhere. Um, yeah, if you share a little bit, so.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so the facilitators collective was a proposal in Cardano's um Project Catalyst a while ago that aimed to train and support meeting facilitators. And we've mentioned it in the ambassador's program a few times before and there's been kind of interest and people have gone, oh, yeah, like I'd like to know a bit more about that. So now the project is officially closing. I thought I'd share a little bit about it. I was wondering, can you give me um screen share rights, Peter? And I'll show the website. Ah, no, it's still saying host disabled participant. I think I need to be a co-host to.
Yeah, well aware, just the buttons, but uh now you should be able to.
Yeah, got it. Yeah, so um we've been working on this for a little while and it's something that people here might find quite useful. Um, little header photo there, back from the days when I used to be a documentary photographer. That's my secret past. There we go. Um, so yeah, what we've got is a few resources that will help new facilitators. First of all, we've got what we've called bite-sized learning resources. And these are just kind of on really specific topics like things like facilitating asynchronous meetings, participatory processes, Myro board tips and tricks, Twitter spaces, all these kind of little things or specific things that can help a facilitator to. Or specific things that can help a facilitator to get on. And then we've also got a full-scale, three-session facilitation course that people can take. And, um, with the accreditation on that, we we don't really mind if you don't do all the activities. Um, you know, different people are at different stages and they might wanna do bits and not do other bits, so that's cool. But there's a lot of activities and games and things that you can try out and hopefully improve your facilitation skills, but the actual accreditation. We don't, we're not looking for you to prove that you've done it. Instead, what you do is you facilitate a meeting somewhere. And you send us the evidence and then we go, yes, you're a facilitator, that's marvelous. Um, one other part of the project, which I think might be interesting to people, is, um, the idea of a facilitator's charter. Originally, um, we started off that we had the idea of creating a charter of like good facilitation practice. Which people could then sign up to, but we very quickly realized that there's no one single good way to do it. Um, you, people facilitate in different ways and it suits the community that you're in, so. What we, what we developed, I think, is about ways, I think it's relevant to how we develop, um. A standard of some kind in a decentralized community. What we did is we worked with Consens, which is another catalyst project. To develop tooling for communities or even maybe individual facilitators to create their own charter about how they do it. So you can see the information about that on here and explains how you can create one, how it works. Consens has unfortunately stopped being developed, uh, maybe that's temporary, maybe it's full time, I don't know. But we have got a draft of some of the issues and questions that we would ask people. If they were to develop their own charter. So I'm thinking it might be something that would be interesting to. Um, individual workgroups in the ambassador program or individual facilitators in the ambassador program. And if anyone's interested, you can contact us, there's our email address, and we could try and set something up. Um, so, yeah, that's about it, and if anybody wants to try out. The facilitation course or have a read of the bite-sized learning materials, we'd be happy to for you to do that. That's about all.
Good stuff. I'd be happy to, honestly, yeah. We see a me too in chats from Guillermo. Alright, um, um, where did my screen go? Almost there. Yeah, we're done. Um, yeah, then I figured, uh, we cannot have a town hall on the day of the vote close without touching on the merger. Um, at the bottom of the slide, you can see the the final result. It's seventy-six point four-three in approval of question one, uh, the token on the merger with fetch and ocean protocol. And seventy-three point seventy-one percent on, um, the accelerated minting of a hundred million AJX. And, yeah, I I figured, let's, let's have some space on thoughts, questions. Um, anything, really. Uh, so if you have any comments to to share on it, uh, by all means, do speak up. Uh, there's some things we can explore, like what does it mean for the ambassador program, and how can we, um. Like you touched on, uh, Judith, like, um, deep funding reaching out to both other communities to join in. Uh, that's also something we have to figure out, right? So any thoughts? Anybody? The floor is yours.
TiVo mentioned in chat the, um, mechanism of voting, Peter. What was the detail behind that? How many, how much Ajax is behind these votes?
Um, um, let me quickly see, uh, so. Let me, uh, first say that, uh, tomorrow we'll do a blog post with a full, um, analysis, including these, uh, numbers. But I may be able to find some. I think it's in the range of, um, don't pay me on this, but, um, it's in the range of a hundred to a hundred fifty million, uh, tokens total. So more or less around, I I think it's ten or twelve, uh, percent turnout, which, um. Honestly, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's, it's a lot. It's, it's way higher turnout than, um, than what we had with the. Uh, phase two vote in, uh. In twenty twenty-one, but yeah, that that would be more or less the range, uh, but but food details on this will be shared and also, um, on the voting portal itself. Uh, you can just export to CSV, uh, that does then require a bit of work, of course, but it, the data is available. And on that note, actually, let me also take this stage to, uh, put a big, uh, compliment to the tech team. I'm not sure if any of you were around during the phase two votes, uh, it's, uh, almost three years ago by now. But, um, the voting port was just crazily upgraded back then, uh, since, uh, back then. And most of this was done in the past weeks, um. Yeah, it's just, back then, there was, for example, you couldn't see the real-time results. You couldn't see who voted with what voting power, there was no CSV, um, ledgers weren't supported, uh. I don't know, it's, um, yeah, just, it was just great to see how, uh, the tech team was able to. Yeah, put the necessary upgrades. I I would say they're necessary for for most of them, um, transparency and, uh. Accountability being a thing, of course.
And that's great, just just a further point of clarity, are we waiting for anyone else's vote? Are we waiting for fetch and ocean to vote?
Uh, no, no, they were waiting on us to vote, actually, um, well, uh, ocean, uh, did not have a vote. And. Yeah, that's basically their situation, that they don't have community votes on this, and for fetch, uh, they had a three-stage vote. Uh, first of all, was like, should we even, uh, do this? And then a separate, uh, vote both for merging with Ocean Protocol and with Singularity Net. And all three, um, top of, I I don't really know all three percentages, but I think all three were above ninety-five percent approval. And that finished, uh, thirteenth, and yeah, ours finished today, sixteenth. I'm quickly reading up on chats, uh, yeah, uh, quadratic, um. Well, quadratic counting, I I I I saw somebody suggest a more appropriate name, uh, for what deep funding is doing. Uh, but yeah, that that will also be, um. Uh, will be in the analysis what the result then would be. Um, we are the one with the highest proportion of no votes, yes, um, I mean, there were only two. Uh, so, yeah, we are the one with the higher percentage of no votes, that's, that's accurate, yes. Tuffle, by all means.
Is there anybody here from PCI or Ocean Protocol or somebody who is now looking at recording back in time? Uh, or in future, basically, and who has not heard about ambassador program? Because now we do have some onboarding material, the draft on building work group and, uh. Um, some discouraging questions, or or, ba- basically, if you're providing a service in your community. And you have some, uh, written information, you go to budget request for ambassador program and we as ambassador program can see. We can already preach some, yeah, like, opportunities with services we provide to each other. I'm just, uh, reading the answer, I question from the slot.
Yeah, fair, um. Well, I don't really know all the names, but most of the names, I think, I've seen, yeah, well, do speak up if you're coming from, uh, fetch or ocean side of, uh, of things. Um, but also noting we didn't do a proper call-out yet, uh, on this, which would be reasonable. So, yeah, in a way, you're suggesting, uh, tougher to to make, basically make a bounty for for people from those ecosystems to. Well, to to educate us, is that, would that be accurate?
I'm met, like, full-blown work groups are like, ideas, they are richers or things they want to try. That are in a budget of, I don't know, we are starting with thousand, two thousand work groups. And try to integrate them with other work groups. And with, yeah, so she's sharing that opportunity, how to get on board, I'm just wondering if the draft word document. Could be already the one that we can share, and this is perhaps one way to connect resources.
Well, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not fully aware of the current state of, um, community work within Fetch and Ocean, um. I do know when we started out with the ambassador program, um, we learned a lot from Ocean Protocol, so I assume. Judging by the base they had back then, uh, they would still be alive and kicking. Um, but this is definitely something I haven't dove into yet, but we should. Yeah, it's also interesting, Vanessa inviting them, uh, to a session about the decentralization blueprint. That being said, um, the decentralization blueprint initially, um, like it's a tokenomic merger. Uh, so the organizations will remain independent, it won't, uh, the, yeah, the foundation, Singularity Net Foundation will remain the Singularity Net Foundation. Uh, so. Yeah, the the scope of the blueprint, in a way, is is, well, i- in practice, it would be, uh, alliance-wide, I imagine, for a lot of things.
Oh, absolutely, but I'm just thinking of ways to collaborate and ways to learn from each other. What we've got that they maybe don't have is. A focus on decentralization, so it would be like a way of inviting them in to have a look at what we're up to.
Yeah, would be very cool. Yeah, and that said, um, also in the Telegram, there was, um, an apologies for the Discord's, uh, oriented folks, but most of the discussion. Did take place on Telegram, um, there was also quite some, some, uh, organization happening, um. Like a group, I think, that that's on Telegram, it's about hundreds twenty people-ish, top of mind. Uh, they also, um. Well, i- in my mind, it would be relatively easy to capture the efforts they, uh, what what they organized. Um, and and move that towards the blueprint, that would be, uh, would be a great outcome. Stephen?
Yeah, thanks, Peter, I was picking up on something you said about the foundational remaining independence and, uh, it being a token merger. Can we infer from that then this is, um, not a governance merger? So there's independent ideas in each different, uh, ecosystem of issues of decentralization, for example, and governance. Um, but, uh, and all that's been shared is a kind of economy. Uh, if an economy is being shared, does that not have governance implications though on treasury?
Um, well, there are, there are governance, uh, implications, um. There, there, there's some outline on this in the the vision paper, um, basically, it's, um, let me grab the link. Uh, it's superintelligence.io, let me put it in chat. Uh, it's basically a Gitbook, um, placeholder website for now. Um, but it does link also to the, uh, the vision paper, and that has, um, quite some, um, on. Uh, community governance, um, so in a way, there's this, uh, layer getting introduced, which is alliance-wide governance. But that's really, that's, the scope there is really on, um, how to deal with potential other. Uh, projects joining the alliance or in some weird case, uh, somebody, um, leaving the. The alliance, how to deal with that. Um, it also outlines, um, quite a bunch of, uh, topics that would remain. Um, within their respective foundations. Not sure if that gets somewhat close to answering you, to be honest.
Yeah, I think I have to dive into the documents and I suppose the basic rule is not to have any reconceptions, maybe. It feels like a work in progress a little bit, doesn't it?
Yeah, for sure, um, yeah, in that sense, it's more, um, outlines than than concrete rule sets, um. And and the work in progress. But yeah, that being said, I do think the the blueprint best case scenario would also have, um, at least a portion on on. Alliance-wide views on decentralization. But, yeah, then again, we cannot all of the sudden now force either fetch or ocean protocol to. Um, implement strictly our vision, uh, on decentralization. Ah, yes, and Vanessa shared in chat, uh, overview document, um, a whole bunch of, uh, resources on the merger.
Um, if anybody fancies jumping in and updating that doc with the results, that'd be good.
Um, yeah, you can, um, I I kind of am inclined to say away tomorrow's blog post, uh, cause that will also include the full analysis of. Well, everything, I mean, full, this is always endless analysis, um, but, yeah.
Out of curiosity, who who initiated the merger?
Well, the process over, um. Uh, a couple of months, and initially, it was, uh, initiated by, uh, Fetch, um, CEO. Um. Yeah, but then again, yeah, we've been close to ocean protocols since twenty eighteen, um. So apparently, like, I I was not part of, uh, any of the negotiations, uh, clearly, but, um. Yeah, just these, these ideas have been around for for a long time.
Yeah, I suppose I'm just interested from a governance perspective, how that works, you know, like, who's who's making the decisions. But again, it's, you know, a work in progress.
Yeah, I imagine, um. So, yeah, the, there's a bit of an outline, um, also in that fishing document on the. Let's say the the top layer, I would say, of the, of the alliance, it's a. Council of which I forgot the exact name right now, the Artificial Superintelligence Council. Um. Yeah, and that's, that's basically, um, has has two people from all three organizations, and that's forming a council together. Uh, that said, the this, this, the scope there is only restricted to like alliance-wide matters, it's not like they will force stuff onto the. Involved parties. Um, any further questions for now on this? Do feel free to speak up. There's no dumb questions? Alright, um, of course, if there's questions later, feel free to simply ask them anywhere. I do see a question, um. Continuing back on the blueprint topic, uh, looking at the clock, we've got about four more minutes, uh, on the slot. Uh, let me quickly hop one more slide. That's actually a separate topic, which we did not really touch on yet. Judith, would you be open for sharing a little bit on this?
Uh.
It's gonna be a full-fledged discussion, right, in in three minutes now?
No, no, well, I mean, I already reached out to most people via DM, but. No, no. Well, I mean, I already reached out to most people via DM, but, um, basically on that community engagement group, first of all, thank you for your, all of your messages. I totally underestimated how many people would be interested in this initiative. My inbox is, my inbox is full with ideas from you guys already, which is amazing. Um, basically, we had a chat with the foundation and um, we're thinking about how we would go about this the best way possible. And what we had come up with was, um, for now to create a form where you can all, um, put in your community engagement ideas and initiatives and also request a budget for that. And that would then be reviewed by the foundation. If they like it, it would get funded. If they don't like it, and we as the ambassadors think it's an amazing initiative, it could still be funded by marketing guilds. But yeah, basically what we, um, had in mind so far would be the best way to do it is, um, basically have community members propose their community initiatives and then have it reviewed by the foundation. Rather than keeping marketing guild meetings where we're all twenty, fifteen or twenty people by now, I don't know, where we're all in this meeting and no one really gets to speak up, like rather than doing it meeting-based, we're just basically for now gonna try this proposal-based approach and see how it's working. And if any of you are strictly against it, please speak up. Nothing is, again, nothing is set in stone yet. It's just, we're just thinking on how, what's the best way we can get those ideas reviewed by the foundation without any of us having to spend hours and hours and hours and meetings? Since there is so many ideas and initiatives. And if no one has anything against it, that form would probably go out around tomorrow. Where you can then start putting in your proposals and we're not talking deep funding, one hour, one page long proposals. We're talking like a short form where you, where you just give a brief overview over what you have planned and what the budget would be. And then, yeah. If approved, it could possibly get funded by the foundation, which would be super exciting. And they are very excited about, um, your submissions.
When you say,
Yeah, if anyone, any, sorry?
So when you say the foundation, Judith, do you mean the supervisory council?
No, we're talking the Singularity Net marketing team.
Okay.
I do see a question in chat, um, on are there upper limits to these kind of proposals?
Well, I mean, uh, I think Loic has mentioned he's gonna request some sort of, like, I think there was some sort of amount he had in mind. But if you're providing massive amounts of value and you can prove in your proposal that, I don't know, you can bring fifty thousand people to the ecosystem, I don't know, then I would be shocked if they wouldn't consider it with a bigger budget. So I would technically say a lot is possible, but I also cannot speak for them. I think as long as you can prove value, then.
Yeah, I did get the impression it would be a building up thing over time. Uh, so start small, grow to bigger.
Yeah, we're probably gonna start somewhat small and see how serious everyone is, like how, how good of a quality of proposals and initiatives people can, um, come up with. Also, a lot of you have said, yeah, we want to do live events. So I mean, live events are fun, but they're also not the easiest thing to do. So we'll have to see how it goes if a lot of community members are doing their live events and it turns out terrible, then I don't know how long the foundation would wanna keep funding that. I don't know. But for now, I would say, yeah, a lot of things are possible. And they have also said they're happy to meet with you one-on-one if they, if they like your proposal and it's something they're completely on board with, then yeah, they're happy to chat with you on a one-on-one meeting as well. So I think a lot of it would be up to you. Can you prove value? Can you deliver?
Uh, Stephen, the foundation in this context is the Singularity Net Foundation?
Yeah, I was just a bit unclear. Maybe I'm missing something about where the funding is coming from, who is deciding who gets funded and on what criteria? Uh, and is it being mediated through the marketing work group or is it directly through the foundation?
Well, basically what we're doing right now is we're just putting out a form, um, where you can put in your proposal, like no one is giving you super tight restrictions on what you can propose. I mean, it's pretty much up to you. I've already put in a marketing guild some ideas that were pre-approved by the foundation, where the foundation has said and that would be really interesting if your community, like if the ambassadors could create those kind of initiatives.
Sorry, but who is the we? Who's the we here, Judith? I don't understand.
Well, for now, uh, um, there was a meeting with Peter, with Loic and myself.
Okay, thanks. That clarifies it.
That was just the first initial talk, but there will be a group, like there will be meetings with the entire group.
Yeah, it's just my basic approach to funding or funding body is that there is someone who is providing the funds, there is a criteria and there's someone making decisions on who's getting funded. So that's really what I think people need is that. And then also there should be a separation between that and who's getting funded, ideally.
Yeah, well, the proposals are gonna get reviewed by Singularity Net marketing, by the Singularity Net marketing team. As I said, if they don't like proposals, but we in the ambassador program or in the marketing guild, we do think the proposal is awesome. We can also look at funding it. Um, and in terms of, sorry, what was your second question? What's the criteria? Um,
Okay, you mean,
This is a new initiative, so there's not any super strict criteria yet, other than does it bring value to the Singularity Net? Uh, to the Singularity Net community.
Okay, I misunderstood. So it's actually the permanent marketing team of the Singularity Net organization. Yeah?
Partners what?
It's the permanent, um, the employed marketing team. It's not, I thought it was the marketing work group for a moment there, but it's not. It's the,
No, it's the, yeah.
Okay, that's where the confusion comes from, I think. Yeah.
All right. Um, looking at the clock, we're five minutes past the slot, but if there's any quick questions, quick topics we should a good touch on right now, please do speak up.
Yeah, sorry to jump in. I don't have a good connection, Keith. Uh, just to point out about the governance sandbox, if you want to mention where we are, what the stage on that to share with a work group and guild.
Uh, yeah, for sure. Uh, yeah. So earlier today, we had a governance work group call. And let me grab the document because that's the easiest way of just sharing. Um, well, let me actually screen share, why not? Uh, also, if it's not yet in the governance work group channel, I'll put it there right after the call. Um, but yeah, it's basically, we worked on a bit of an outline on how to go about testing tools. There's a couple of, um, tools to evaluate selected initially being Citizen OS, Lumio and Ethel. Quite some discussion on how to pronounce Ethel. I go with Ethel. There's Etello as well. Well, let's not go there. Um, yeah, a couple of, um, yeah, basically, I'm not gonna read the whole document. Clearly, there's an initial evaluation framework. And also some outline on what documentation to generate by doing these experiments and then testing these, um, tools. And yeah, a couple of decisions to make. Uh, that right now are three things, being the naming of the core contributor role, whether we should keep it or change it. There was quite some discussion on it. So we figured let's, um, try these tools and figure out if they're, if they're any good for sorting out these decisions. Also the Q2 budget allocations. And a potential decision on having a quarterly deadline for budget submissions. Yeah, then there's a list of all the work groups that can participate in these, uh, couple of criteria. Some background use cases from deep funding, um, that we will start testing these in April. Yeah, so it's, um, this document is open, as you can see, it's a work in progress, a living document. Um, let me just go ahead and share it right now in the governance, uh, work group. Line for good measure, I'll put it in chat as well. Well, actually, it's the same URL as Felix posted in governance work group earlier today. Right, so there we go in chat as well for good measure. Um, yeah, I think that kind of touches on that topic a little bit at least. Um, anything else before wrapping up? Going once, going twice? All right, then that makes it a wrap for today. Thanks all for being here and sharing your time with us. And yeah, a full day of community calls ahead tomorrow. We've got the knowledge base work group, we've got the archive work group, we've got education work group, and we've got R and D guilds. So you won't have to be bored tomorrow. I hope to see you on one of those. Thanks, everybody.